Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky. Regular meeting, City Hall, May 17, 2022, 4:30 PM. We will start out with the invocation and pledge by Mrs. Commissioner Dana Beasley-Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite Captain Kevin Lashley up to the podium to give our invocation this evening. Captain Lashley started with the Bowling Green Fire Department in 2010 and currently serves as the Fire Department's chaplain. He's also the Fire Department's new peer support coordinator. And so I just want to thank you so much for your role, not only as a firefighter, but as the chaplain, and the work that you have done, especially after the tornadoes and what that meant to our first responders and the families, and just that special load that you carry to take care of the spiritual needs of our first responders and our citizens. And so I just want to thank you and also the chaplains of our police department while you're here, and just ask that you would take the moment to start us off with the opening prayer, and thank you so much for all you do.
Well, thank you. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you for this time, this opportunity. Father, we pray this afternoon, as decisions are made that involve our city and our citizens, that the commissioners and the mayor will make the decisions that need to be made. And Father, we pray and continue to pray for the safety of our firefighters, of our police department. And Father, we thank you for all of those that are willing to serve, and we thank you for those that are serving here tonight in this commission meeting. And again, Father, without you, we would and could be nothing. Again, we ask that whatever is said and done here tonight is pleasing and acceptable to you, and we want to give you all the honor, glory, and praise. We pray this in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you.
So moved. And if you'll now join me in saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do you want to make mention?
Oh, yes. And just a quick announcement, as a proud mama, my oldest son is graduating from middle school tonight. He's got his eighth grade commencement, and the mama needs to be seated by 5:45. And so I just wanted to make folks aware that if I step out, it's just because I gotta go celebrate my son and making it through those middle school years. So thank you for letting me make that announcement.
Absolutely. Important things for every parent to accomplish. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley-Brown.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here.
Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments at this time?
Just the usual, want to remind the audience, anyone wanting to make public comments at the end of the regular agenda needs to sign the board in the back of the room, the list. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Next, we'll have our approval of minutes. Any comments, questions?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, I believe. Yes, all right. No comments. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-84.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Cameron Levis to the position of Special Populations Coordinator in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley-Brown. Mr. Mizel.
So we have resignation of Holly Vincent, our Special Populations Coordinator, recently. Like to thank Holly for her, all her years of service. She did a great job. And I'd like to ask Erin Holesy, our HR Director, to come up and make the recommendation to fill her spot. Erin?
Good afternoon. I am recommending the promotion of Cameron Levis to the position of Special Populations Coordinator. And as Mr. Mizel said, this vacancy was created by Holly Vincent resigning. And this is kind of a unique situation. Cameron and Holly have worked together in Special Populations for a long time, and Cameron has done a lot of really excellent and wonderful things for our department. We did not feel that it was necessary to go out and do a formal recruitment for this position. We thought that it was very clear and obvious that Cameron has been working for the city. He's been working on his education certifications, doing wonderful things, and that that was a very obvious promotion. No need to spend time, energy, or funds going out and doing that. So there's some information about Cameron in the memo that I sent you, and then we will be, we have actually already posted the position for his replacement, and he'll be an active participant in selecting that new person. And so we do think that we'll have a great opportunity of bringing someone on just as talented as Cameron to that division. Do you have any questions?
I'd just like to say, great job. I'm so glad you chose not to go outside. I can't imagine anyone filling this position better than Cameron, so, great job.
Same, likewise. Just for him to have his first book out, that's out there, and I know how he's been very instrumental with our Special Population with the parks and everything, it's a great choice. And so, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're gonna, I'm gonna congratulate Holly as well, because she's gonna be working with Special Olympics, and she's gonna, she's gonna be a director at state level with Special Olympics, so she'll be continuing to do work here in Bowling Green on behalf of that population.
For sure, for sure. Great opportunity. She's done a lot of great work as well.
Yep.
Erin? Okay. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-85.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Pamela Booth to the position of Code Compliance Support Specialist in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
I'm gonna ask Brent Childers to come up and make this recommendation for this spot in NCS, and let him explain the moves.
All right. Thank you. So this position became available, we had a resignation in our building division. Tabitha Joyner, who is our Code Support Specialist for the last several years, I think about 15 years, decided that she wanted to change, and so we moved her over to our building division. So now she's one of the first people that you walk in whenever you get a building permit. So she went all the way across the hallway in our building, so that created the vacancy in our Code Compliance Division. So we went out for applications, received, I think, 45 applications, interviewed nine, had a really good pool of candidates, but then we had, we decided to stay within the city. And so we're recommending Pam Booth. Pam has been with the Parks Department for the last several years in various capacities, from cemetery to administration, but the last several years, been at Parks Maintenance in an administrative support role. So she'll be coming up and serving in the support role of our Code Compliance Division, handling a lot of the phone calls, which you could imagine are always fun phone calls in Code Compliance, handling all of our paperwork and invoicing and payments. And so we're really excited about having Pam join the team at NCS.
Questions? And we see you out there, so let's make this official. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Pamela. Municipal Order Number 2022-86.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting the number 202248 for Afghan support services from Refuge Bowling Green of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $90,000.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
We would like to put the Open Society Foundations grant money to work, the $150,000 that you all approved recently, to assist Afghan refugees in Bowling Green. We could not tackle this in-house, so we went out to, for proposals, RFP, and received one proposal to run the programming on this for $90,000, and we, that one proposal was from Refuge Bowling Green. And they were gonna come in and provide ESL, driver's license education classes, employment services to this group of people, and we're excited to be able to find them to work with us, work with NCS, and partner with us on this project for $90,000. So Brent's here, can answer any question on this, is, I don't see Leida, but we'll try to answer any questions you might have on this, but this is a contract with Refuge Bowling Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Any questions? All right. A great use of our grant monies for this effort. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-87.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting the number 202251 for the 2022 Parks Mowing Program Phase Two from Bluegrass Landscape LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $89,999.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
So this is a very heavy season for our Parks Maintenance Division, and to get mowing, maintenance done with the grass growing, and the last four or five years, we have had some difficulty filling these seasonal positions to get everything done. HR has tried job fairs, we've tried recruiting bonuses, with not much success, to be honest, given the environment we're in with workforce. So we went out and we decided to bid this out as another contract, and this is for 15 acres, and in your packets, it's, there's a list of 10 locations, ranging from the Westin Park to Hobson Grove Ballfields and Parking, Greenway, totaling, we went out for bid, and we got one bid, and we actually got two, but the other one withdrew, and it would be for $89,999 to Bluegrass Landscape, to provide mowing and maintenance on these 10 locations to help us out this summer. This is following up after the first one we did that included approximately 40 acres. This includes about 15 acres of mowing and maintenance, but we think this is, we're down to this as the, our only choice, basically, to get, keep, to stay caught up and keep things looking decent, mowed and manicured, and we're recommending this award to Bluegrass Landscape.
Thank you. Comments, questions? None. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-89.
Eighty-eight.
Eight.
Municipal Order authorizing renewal of bid number 202013 for Arbicultural Services from Bushels &amp; Blooms LLC of Franklin, Kentucky, in the amount not to exceed $55,000.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley-Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This is, this is a renewal of a prior bid from Arbicultural Services, and includes tree stump removal, as well as pruning, and any hazardous limb removal. We have in your packets the letter from Bushels &amp; Blooms re-upping on the pricing. We did add another department to this. This used to be just parks only, but Public Works is gonna be able to use this as well now for any tree and stump work that we need done out there, and this is a year contract. We're just renewing.
Questions, comments? None. Roll call.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-89.
Municipal Order authorizing and approving bid number 202247 for the Weston Street and Rockingham Avenue Roundabout Construction through non-competitive negotiations with Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $817,847.73, and further authorizing the City Law Department to negotiate the acquisition of properties necessary for the project, and authorizing appropriate city officials to execute deeds, easements, and other documents related to the land acquisition necessary for the project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mizel.
This is a project we've been working on during this fiscal year budget. You all approved this last year. This is a roundabout, and we consider a pretty major bottleneck right now on Weston Avenue and Rockingham, thereby Bowling Green High School. It's a three-way. Greg and his staff worked on this last year and thought that a roundabout would work well there. And so this, this bid went out, and we only got one bid back, and it was over budget. So Greg went to work in negotiating a lesser amount, and it got the costs down on this to where we can work it into our budget at the 878, 17, 847 figure for construction. This also gives us the green light to finish up with the right-of-way acquisition and move forward on this. We want to get this done before school starts in August of this summer, so we must move quickly. Hillary's also been working on some things with the, with the school system, school board, with property they own, and the State Education Department, and we're hoping we can pull all this together and get it done before school starts in mid-August. So it's gonna be tight, but we're gonna do the best we can, and Greg's here can answer any questions on this project, but we recommend going ahead and accepting this bid that's negotiated back down to the 817 figure.
Are the other two projects still in the scope? Are they?
The roundabouts?
Yes.
They are. They will be given more funding in this upcoming budget that you'll see here in the next week or so. They're still on the radar. This was the most critical one, we thought we needed to try to get done. So another reason, I think, Bowling Green City Schools pushed off their, their starting date to the mid-August to allow more time for this. Greg, you have any more information? We are, we might have some closures, though, of Weston for through, pass-through traffic, is that correct?
Yeah, in order to meet the schedule, which is critical, again, with opening a school, with all the construction work they're doing around school, we made the determination that it makes sense, you know, financially and for traffic and for the constructability, to get it done quicker, to go ahead and close Weston at, at Rockingham for the duration of the, of the contract. And certainly, again, that'll be up until August the 19th, I think, is the final completion date listed in the contract. So, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be different for traffic, but I think, again, in the summer, Weston is less traveled, and they've got ways around it. So, yeah, we're gonna actually close Weston to through traffic.
And we will notify the public when that happens.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Which will be soon. Thank you all.
Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-90.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security Grant Funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of security surveillance equipment for the Information Technology Department in the amount of $162,226.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
So this is one of three Homeland Security Grant applications that we're gonna cover here in just a few minutes. This one is for the IT Department. These are really good grants because they're, requires, requires no match. It's 100% funding. This one, we would like to use, if we get it, this is for 56 security cameras at police departments, city parks, governmental buildings, and also to replace a network video recorder, network switch, and 37 transition network switches around the city to support cameras, wireless access points, traffic signals, all that. We feel this is a good use of this grant for IT, and it's for $162,226. Recommend your approval to apply for this grant.
I would like, I mean, I'd like to see this, because I see this as a replacement. I know that Commissioner Bailey is mentioning some cameras, and I've also have talked to Chief Delaney. I would like to see from him, if possible, if other commissioners agree, what he thinks are priority cameras for our city, and what he thinks are areas that we need to prove camera security. And I know this is an addendum, but see if other commissioners agree with that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I know Carlos is on board. We got unanimous, so thank you, everybody. So if we could work on that.
We will look at strategic locations for these 56.
Because he's mentioned he has areas, and I think he already has something that he might like to tee up, and I definitely would like to have that viewed for our community.
I think there's been discussions of some, some traffic intersections with cameras, too, so we'll look at that.
Thank you very much. Okay. No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. Municipal Order Number 2022-92.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, I apologize.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security Grant Funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of an emergency communications recording system for the Police Department in the amount of $40,289.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley-Brown, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
This Homeland Security Grant is for the Police Department, another 100% funding, no match. This would be to replace the communications recording system out at Greenwood Fire Station that is our backup 911 center. That equipment is outdated. Warranty on it, warranty on it is going to expire very soon, and we would like to replace the recorders out there that would, would pick, pick up the recording of the calls and get that back up to good equipment like it should be. So $40,289 for the Police Department to use at their backup 911 center.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-92.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security Grant Funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of mobile radios for the Fire Department in the amount of $70,980.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley-Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
$70,981 on this one, no match, to buy 15 mobile radios for, mobile radios for the Fire Department for the new Motorola system we've got going, and these would be for the, for the firefighters that will be coming on in the next year or two for station aid up at the trans park. So this is also on the state pricing contract for, for radios, that will be an easy purchase.
Okay. Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-93.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant application with the Federal Transit Administration for Federal Fiscal Year 2022 Transportation Assistance under the Section 5307 and 5339 Programs, and further approving state match funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley-Brown, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This is our annual Section 5307 and 5339 grant funding. $1,185,828 goes toward operating capital, and a total of $133,28 for the capital assistance under 5339. There's a 50% local match for operating and a 20% match for the capital piece, and we recommend going after this. And our transit manager here is here tonight, Robert Gill, along with Nick Cook and Brent Childers, to answer any questions you might have on this. It's a complicated formula with the match, but it's still worth the effort.
Questions or comments? None. Roll call.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-94.
Municipal Order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the fourth amended and restated lease agreement with Crawdaddy Enterprises, Inc., doing business as 440 Main, related to the lease of city sidewalk improvements.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley-Brown. Mr. Mizel.
So we've had a sidewalk lease for a very long time with 440 on Main Street, and as you can, as you probably noticed, they have made some changes to their restaurant. They put up the, the awning, a nice-looking awning out front. They are no longer needing the, the parking spaces out front for the, for the band that's been, used that for several years. Hillary worked with them on this, this revised lease, and it's, it's pretty self-explanatory, but those are the major changes. Their band, I think, would be on premise now within, within that sidewalk boundary under their awning, and, and we'll go from there with, with the parking spaces will be available going forward out front.
Questions?
He's also agreed to put up the cafe barriers, so they'll be probably the first downtown restaurant or business to, to use the barriers that we've tried to put in place until COVID hit us, and Hillary worked with them on that as well. Hillary, you got any more to add?
That they were ordered, and the, the front two should be in by the end of May. The edges, I think, had to be specially ordered. He said it may be June, and he's worked with the florist, he's done some of the ones that have the flower pots, so I think it'll look really nice. And then hopefully, the rest of the businesses, I can contact them about doing barriers as well. But he agreed to be kind of the leader in that, and so, so we'll see, once he gets...
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Coordinates number BG 2022-21, so first reading is non-binding.
Ornets rezoning real estate. Ornets rezoning tracts of land containing 33.41 acres, from AG Agriculture and RE Residential Estate to LI Light Industrial, located at 1597 and 1609 Glasgow Road, and 233 Sunnyside Gotts Road, presently owned by Margie Duvall.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
A public hearing was held on this with planning and zoning, and there was 6-0 vote to recommend this rezoning from Ag to Light Industrial. Mr. Peterson is here with us tonight, in case you have any questions on this one.
Questions or comments? Thank you for being here, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley-Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Coordinates number BG 2022-22, first reading, non-binding.
Ornets rezoning real estate. Ornets rezoning a tract of land containing 0.34 acre, from RM2 to family residential to RS1D, single-family residential, located at 1201 Cabell Drive, presently owned by Hunter Morrow.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley-Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
This one is a piece of property on Cabell Drive, and it also went to public hearing at planning and zoning, and received unanimous vote on the approval going from RM2 to RS1D. And again, Ben Peterson is here to answer any questions you might have on this one.
Questions or comments? None at this time? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-95.
Municipal Order Authorizing Acceptance of West Kentucky State Aid Funding for Emergencies Funds Related to the Severe Weather Event on December 11th, 2021, and Further Ratifying Actions of the Mayor to Execute a Memorandum of Agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Department of Military Affairs, Division of Emergency Management.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
So this is the West Kentucky State Aid Funding for Emergencies, the SAFE Fund that was set up by our, our state legislators through Senate Bill 150, and this was set up to cover things that FEMA was not going to, to cover. So we, we put a request in that totaled about $1,150,000, which includes our 5.2% FEMA responsibility of that 10% from the 90/10. And so, they, they calculate that based on what we have filed so far with FEMA, so that, that amounted to about $85,000 so far. We will probably get, that will grow, obviously, and we'll get supplemental draws from that. But the other areas we focused on here were things like community tree replacement. We, we submitted $150,000 request for that. We put in for Greenways Cleanup Program of $75,000. We put $200,000 in for large tree and stump removal for the private property work that we did with volunteers in, in, in the neighborhoods that, that Public Works kind of oversaw. And then we also put in for $50,000 for utility assistance for people that had to remain in their homes and lost all the efficiency that they usually have due to the storm damage. So, we put $50,000 in for that, for loss of efficiency to, for people to, that could get money for that. We also applied for reimbursement for just wages that were not overtime wages. FEMA only covered overtime, so we submitted that along with other employee expenses like tire replacements that we ran into, we had to reimburse for. Technology upgrades we experienced during the storm, and then even we had some money in there for food and meals that we paid for, for the volunteers at the DRC and a lot of other places. So that total was $570,000 that we submitted. And then we had some expenses on enhanced security in the areas that were, were damaged, like in the neighborhoods that were extremely damaged where we had to put extra security in. We even had some cameras and, and police patrols, that sort of thing, where we were experiencing vagrancy thefts and burglaries, unfortunately, in the, in the damaged areas, and that totaled $18,000. So, that's kind of a, a quick rundown of the $1,150 that we submitted. We don't know when we'll get this money, but it's part of Senate Bill 150, and we didn't want to, of course, pass up on any money. So, we just need your ratification on this, that we, we've already submitted it.
And if I may, you asked me at the last meeting how much we had submitted for FEMA reimbursement. It's over 5.7 million currently and still submitting.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mizel, if you wouldn't mind, I know I've discussed with you before, asked if there was anything out there for small businesses. If you, if the city staff would might look in any opportunities we could get to help our small businesses that chose not to get a small business loan. They don't want to borrow money at this time, but anything we can do to help them would be wonderful.
Well, we do have the new Small Business Tornado, Tornado Relief Program that we're doing. That would be any of the businesses that were located in the path, and that would be a rebate on property tax and on their net profits. That'll start this fall with the property taxes for this year. They'll have a two-year window to decide when they want to start that program and apply for it, and we'll have the applications out this summer.
Now, that's if they build on their same site, if they reopen and rebuild on the site that they were on.
Yes.
Mr. Mizel explained. I think that happened on the commission meeting when I was absent. Some of these businesses need help now to rebuild, so anything we could do to find to help them, I'd appreciate, because that in turns helps our citizens as well. Thank you.
Further discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-96.
Municipal Order Authorizing Adoption of the Revised City of Bowling Green Fire Promotional Procedures.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to ask Erin Holes, our HR Director, to come back up and give you the, the highlights of this, this ordinance, I'm sorry, this municipal order, the changes we're making to the promotional procedures in the, the Fire Department. Erin?
All right. Thank you. So, just like we did earlier, we made some changes to the police promotional procedures, and some of the changes that we made at that time were intended to remove anything that was time-bound or date-related and move those to the annual announcement. So I've done the same thing in this one, so that way we don't have to update the promotional procedures year after year. A couple of other changes that are being recommended. And the process is generally staying the same. They have decided they wanted to remove the deputy chief promotion procedures from the annual. They're still going to do promotional procedures, but they're going to wait until the opportunity presents itself, because those positions just don't come open often, and it's a lot of work for a candidate to think ahead and, and test for it, not knowing year after year if there's going to be an opening. So that was one major change. They've also made some general changes to scoring and the weighting of the written test versus the skills assessment or the assessment centers, a little bit different. And then also, moving forward, one change that they would like to make is the eligibility to apply to promote. We have added one year additional for each position, and that will start with anyone who was hired after December 1st of this year. So, we'll grandfather people in. They, they had a certain understanding of, of time needed in position for, for those opportunities, but moving forward, we'll follow a new schedule for those promotions. That's, that's most of the details. Any questions?
Work here.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-97.
Municipal Order Approving the Appointment of Barry Pruitt to the Bowling Green Audit Committee.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. Barry Pruitt has served well as the, on our committee, and he, I asked him if he'd like to continue to serve, and he has agreed to do that, and I'd like to recommend him for his continuance.
Great choice. He also served us very well on our ethics committee for a number of years and did a great job.
Sorry, this is a new, he, Barry has, has served in ethics. I apologize, and I stated this is not a continuance, but he wants...
I wasn't correcting you there.
But specifically to find this person, I, there were several people we went through to, to actually find someone that was willing to do this, and I'm very grateful, because a lot of people in the audit committee want to work for the city and have, want to make sure that they have the ethics as well, and so Barry...
I believe it is my Christie Surt. She did.
Always looking for good recommendations, so thank you.
Good one.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-98.
Municipal Order Approving the Appointment of Eric Reed and Reappointment of Dr. Martha Sales to the University District Review Committee.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. This actually has a recommendation for a new board member and a continuance for Dr. Martha Sales. Dr. Sales has told me that she would like to continue to serve. Eric Reed is a university professor. He is a history professor, also an author. You see his resume is here. He has interests. He's also has served previously on the Preservation Board for Bowling Green, and he has interest in, he also, you have to live within the WKU district specifically to serve on this board, and he has all those provisions and is willing to serve. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Coordinates Number BG 2022-18, so our second reading is binding.
Orders rezoning real estate. Orders rezoning a portion of attractive land containing 0.04 acre from HB Highway Business to RM4 multifamily residential located at Zero Cooksy Lane, presently owned by the Hobbit Lovers Lane LLC.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. This is our second reading, is a 5-0 vote. No further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Coordinates Number BG 2022-19, second reading is binding.
Orders rezoning real estate.